Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's council meeting. We shall get underway.
We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, wunaguru bangala miranya, yuradumelbu. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. We, the Whilea council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part, and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we all can share. Item three are obituary notices for those who wish or can, you may wish to stand. We pay our respects to Glenn Falcone, Geraldine McWaters, Peter Derbyshire, James Medlam, Barbara Welk, Archie Best, Frederick Priestley, Joyce Maiden, Gloria Jenkins, Victor Adams, Robert Powell, Nick Sutron, Pauline Gardner, Frances Yeomans, and Nigel Derbyshire. I ask you to remain standing for a moment's silence. Thank you. Our attendance record, we have two apologies, councillor Todd and councillor Inglis. We have no leave of absence. Item five, council member executive declarations, 5.1 conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they feel they should declare? No conflict of interest? Any gifts or benefits we have received? Yes, councillor Knox.
I attended the Circus 360 at the Middleback Theatre.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, councillor Border.
I attended the same 360 at the Middleback.
Thank you. What may let you both out? Sorry, CEO.
I've got two declarations. I also attended the Country Arts SA presentation of the 360 All Stars at the Middleback Art Centre and received two tickets, approximate value, I think $20. I also, that was on the 20th of March. I also attended, on the 7th of April, the SA NFL's inaugural Facility Spun announcements in terms of funding for various facilities. So, on behalf of the council, I attended and received confirmation that we received $25,000 for a scoreboard upgrade at Bennett Oval. I think the approximate value of the tickets to a gather round game, which was held on the afternoon of the 7th of April, was approximately $35.
Thank you, CEO. Item six, minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1 confirmation of the minutes of our ordinary council meeting held on Monday, 18th of March. Councillor Knox.
Moving.
Moving. Do I have a second, councillor Border? I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, we have nil. Deputations, we have nil. Petitions, we have nil. Public question time, I believe we have nil. Thank you. Item 11, council member activities. Quite another list there. I'll give members any opportunity, anybody wish to elaborate on anything? Take us one night just to get through the list. But it certainly shows we're out there in the community. Thank you very much. Item 12. Are we dealing with this, or are we going to seek leave to transfer this to later in the meeting?
Yeah, through the mayor, we'll do this later in the meeting, approximately seven o'clock. And it'll be a confidential item, so we'll have to go into confidence at that time.
Yep. Somebody care to move that we refer this back later in the meeting, seven o'clock under confidence? Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item 13, committee reports, we have nil. Item 14, reports from council offices, 14.1, Office of the Chief Executive, 14.1.1 CEO's Action Report. You have it there, we'll take it as read. Any questions? I'm sure the CEO will address them. Councillor Knox.
Councillor Border was first.
Thank you, councillor.
Sorry, is it, somehow you got to the bottom of my list?
He's, he's got the magic. Yes, unless you were going to talk to it first, but I had a question just in regards to three items there, the civic building, just an update on the approach to market from the advisers. Is there any sort of live update or current update there? Yep. Through the mayor, a report will be coming to the May council meeting to specifically in relation to that item. In line with the Audit and Risk Committee's recommendation that we seek independent property development advice to inform councils' decision-making in terms of the approach to market, we have approached two companies, as well as Renewal SA, to get some feedback on a draft expression of interest document that has been prepared. We have sought proposals from the two companies and the report on the 12th of May will talk to that very item and inform council both in terms of the recommended approach to market and probably an associated resolution around budget and resourcing for that activity. Wonderful, thank you. And in the Community Solar Scheme, so I note the comments there about the RDA not wanting to, not having the resources to look into it further. So, one of the queries was if enough councils were on board with it. So, who is in the best position to canvass the other EP councils for interest in the scheme? Would that be the RDA, is that the EPLGA, is that us? How do we progress it? Port Perry and Mitcham have to do it? How do we get our hands on that action?
Yeah, so our thoughts at this time were, obviously, to progress it any further is going to be a resourcing issue. So I think what we were sitting with is, at the moment, we've sort of investigated whether the RDA were interested or able to do it with their current resourcing levels, and the answer was no. So it would probably, it would need a resolution of council that they want to put resources into investigating further potentially. I mean, the EPLGA might be able to do some investigations into whether the other EP councils are interested, but it'll be similar, they don't have, you know, the resources to undertake the project. They might be able to do some investigation if there's others interested. But yeah, at this time, it probably needs a council resolution, and if we want to progress it further, ample resources towards it.
I'd add, just to clarify, in your view of a community solar scheme, are you envisaging a solar farm that the community is drawing power from, or a bulk purchase of solar panels for?
I probably don't personally understand it well enough to answer that question.
Yep.
Except that seeing Port Perry, and I guess the main interest is when I caught up with the mayor of Mitcham, talking about the success that they were having, which made me think, oh, that, that sounds good, let's get in on that. So the resource that was provided, so I'm not sure.
Sure.
But it's really just to see, okay, to grant, to your point, if the resources aren't here to proceed with looking after the programme, can we inquire to Port Perry and Mitcham of how they did it as a singular council? Or if the RDA would take it on board if there were multiple EP councils, who is going to ask the EP councils if they want to be on board to make it of benefit?
Yep. What we could do is, the actual reviews into Port Perry and Mitcham are in, and they weren't successful. So, what, what has?
Was that in the report? Sorry, did I miss that?
No, it's not, because no one wants to. It was very well-meaning and well-intentioned. What, what the, the, the success stems down to, those understanding that going out and sourcing solar for your property is good, it has a payback period. The bulk purchasing concept, which is what Mitcham and Perry have done, didn't change the uptake of solar. What has been found to be very effective is ways to let your community know that it's now a no-brainer. And, and there are reputable people that you go and source your solar from. The, there's no, so, there's no savings to going to one supplier and trying to market that one supplier to your community as the council. So that's been the findings. Does that?
So that's a, yeah, that, that's, I mean, if we've dodged a bullet, then great, let's take it off the table.
Yes.
But I didn't get that understanding from.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and a lot of it is, is showing respect for, for, for the councils that tried to engineer greater uptake through a singular focus and a bulk purchase. But, but to, to the point of actually getting your community to understand that it is a no-brainer and you'll get it paid back very quickly, and trying to get landlords who have very low social tenants to undertake that, that's a different, that is, that is the end goal and the end game and the main objective. Getting that to occur can, one of the most simplest things is to have a couple of hours at your local library where you bring your power bill in and you have it analysed by someone who can show you really quickly how you can save money and, and have that engagement piece. That's been found to be more successful than the bulk but purchase that Perry and Mitcham have done.
Okay.
So I suggest perhaps we bring a report together that looks at that kind of community grassroots stimulation of people understanding that, oh my goodness, I could get solar tomorrow and I would have it paid back really quickly and I'd have lower power bills.
And that's, that's the, so that's no investment from council, no risk for council, it's purely an education piece for the community to say, if you didn't really know it already, it's actually quite economical and effective, reputable power supplier from these companies, X, Y, Z. But an education rather than a on behalf of scenario. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Now that's, that does satisfy me. That's, I'm happy with that.
You can get, the EPLGA was, has led that work. You can have a presentation, I've got a conflict of interest there, so I don't want to recommend that tonight.
Okay.
But if you chose to get that understanding of, of how that, that outputs, that's. But I've, I've seen the most impactful is to have people go to a place they're very comfortable to visit with their power bill, sit down with someone that perhaps we've endorsed, so they know there's some, although I'm not saying councils are trustworthy, we'll select someone to endorse them, that has generally proven to be more impactful at them going and purchasing solar powers or talking to their landlord, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, without any confusion around it. Okay, that's all. Thank you. That's good. So that's all, I'm happy with that one. And the next one was Plaza Youth. So the comment refers to the property being secured and no longer at risk. But I have had communications to the exact contrary to that. And so I just wonder what we've put in the minutes. Is that reflective of the current situation?
If you can just take that question on notice, when Gail Rustic arrives, we'll get the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you. And that's it, that's it for me. Thank you.
Councillor Knox.
I've got two items. The first, the first one is green waste. We had a resolution some months ago about exploring opportunities for a weekly green waste collection and a Fortnally red bin collection. I would have thought that would have been in the report, just to know it's an outstanding matter. The second thing is community solar. I'm somewhat bemused by the RDA's response. I, and I wonder if it's a continuity thing, seeing they've changed over management. But I do remember that about three to five years ago, they did investigate it. So I think we should go back to them and ask whether they could share that information of three, three to five years ago and how that went from the RDA. It might have also had an involvement of the EPLGA as well, but it was certainly an RDA project.
Gail? Just, sorry to put you straight under the microscope. Councillor Border was asking about Plaza Youth and the statement in the the papers that indicates that they no longer require council financial support to secure the building, and they have in fact secured it. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that one, please?
Yep, so. Sorry, wrong button. And we met extensively with Plaza Youth during the time where we were looking for solutions for them. So they sought, we proposed, you know, what had been offered by council. And they chose to get their own advice and follow a different path. So they changed, they've changed the way they're, they're doing business at the moment. And they've put their funding all into securing the building opposed to going for a loan and paying it back under the scheme. So, yeah, sort of interesting choice, and we just have to respect that that's the way they went. But the building is secure and it's business as usual, and they are seeking external fundings to run some extra programmes as well. I think because they've, they've taken from a different portion of their funding. So, yeah, it's, yeah. We, I think we had lots of meetings and we, we tried to kind of understand where they landed. And their board decided to go the way they've gone. Yeah.
So being out of, out of the loop a little bit there, because obviously correspondence replies to you to say that it's not, it's not all hunky-dory. And so when I read that in the report, I just thought, it being a fantastic outcome, I thought, I've just gotten information that says that everything's at risk. The building might not be at risk, but the service to the community is at risk. And so I just think that if I was a community member reading that, I would think, this is a contrary position here, that it's a fantastic result, but where the service may not be there tomorrow. Or it may not be there because all the money goes into the building or whatever, the way they've chosen to do it in their wisdom.
I think it's two issues.
Yes, I was going to say, absolutely.
And that other issue, I presume will come up later.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, so I guess to that end, I'm just very conscious of, again, the message that we send to the community. If we're saying it's a fantastic result, that it is a fantastic result for Plaza Youth Centre, that this service continues, especially given the heightened focus on social issues and misbehaviour in the community. That that is a service that's really in the spotlight.
Yeah, I suppose we, we delivered from what the, I suppose the correspondence was from Plaza Youth was for us to help them to secure the building. So I suppose that was our involvement at that time. I haven't heard anything from Plaza Youth, just to the contrary. So I suppose that's a conversation that we can have with Joanne. And, but yeah, I was, I was unaware of any other complications other than that the building had been secured and that was, I think, what we were asked to help with. So, yeah, I can go back to Plaza Youth certainly and get some more information.
Yeah, I think so. Just make sure it all lines up, that it's a consistent.
Yep.
And accurate, yeah.
Cool.
Thank you. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Pond.
I've just got something to probably clarify that a little bit. I've actually got a motion without notice that I'd like to bring up later on regarding the, the support that is now needed at Plaza. But my question was around the cuttlefish dive site work. It's running a little bit late. Are we confident that it's going to be done before the start of the cuttlefish season?
Do you have in the hotspot seat today? The works are expected to be finished by the 23rd of April, out on site. And that includes enough of, well, the works to be considered completed for the start of Cuddy's Boats and Stephen Storick's adventures. So yes, so we are confident, Tammy, that, or councillor Pond, deputy mayor, that we are confident. Sorry, it's been a long day. We're very confident that the works, and we did a site visit last week and it is looking amazing and the concept, you know, I can give you a little sneak peek later in, in the break to see, to show you what it's going to look like out there. So, yeah, very confident.
Thank you. And the other one was, do we have an estimated time that the lighthouse will be operational? Sorry, the accommodation side of the cottages?
It's not really me, but when we were out doing a site visit with Liz, I don't know if Liz is online.
I am.
Oh, there's Liz.
Yeah, thanks.
Hi Liz, would you like to give an update?
Absolutely. So the cottages have been substantially complete and they've undergone a practical completion inspection. We expect the power to be activated by the end of this month, which will allow us to do a funnel handover. There is a slight delay in the power supply upgrade. It's between our retailer and SAP at the moment. But we hope to escalate that so we get it done by the end of this month rather than May.
Thank you. That's, that's one of the questions I get asked regularly. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Border? Okay, thank you. I will just make one comment. It looks as if we're very much all on the same page. Because a lot of the points you've just raised, I've had a discussion with the CEO this afternoon. Because it is my intent, because our agenda's a little bit light, is to try with all the media I've got to do this week, pick what I consider perhaps 60-second updates at just about every subject you've raised. We've already discussed with the CEO about how we can address those. So we're on the same page. Well, we have that report in front of us then. Would somebody care to move, please? Councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Klobbika. Those in favour, I'll put the motion. Those against, carried. Thank you. Oh, there was just one other thing I was going to raise during that, the reference to great white sharks. I anticipate at the May meeting, we will presenting a further recommendation that is likely to be put up at the next EPLGA meeting, which will be the end of the same week of the meeting, which I think will be more acceptable. But there is work going on behind the scenes to try to come up with a more non-confrontary resolution. But yes, I had that on my list. I was too busy listening to all you. Item 14.2 Corporate Services Ordinary Reports, 14.2.1 Monthly Budget Review for March 2024. We'll take it as read. You, you or our finance manager wish to speak to it, or just take questions, the CEO?
Just respond to questions.
So do we have any questions, Grant? Councillor Knox?
I noticed that the waste contract is up 105,702. I'm just wondering whether we have any means of checking that the properties do have the right number of bins and not including extra bins that we're paying for.
Yeah, well, we've actually, we did an audit of that in the last year and got that because there were some data anomalies with that. So that, that has all been quite clearly checked. And then the monthly invoices are checked quite closely to make sure they then align with the, with the contract. Yep. But the thing is that that's quite variable is the tonnages. So obviously we estimate based on previous tonnages, but we, the pickup bit is quite stable, but the tonnages can vary.
Thank you. Councillor Simpson.
Just elaborating on your comment there. So if I, my next one, I have four red bins. What's he get, what's he get chance? They're going to have three red bins, sorry, three green bins and one red one. And we know we're paying, who, and we know who's paying for what.
Yep, so that audit was undertaken about 12 months ago with Violia. So basically, they know where the extra bins are or the, so that was done sort of street by street as a project. And then a letters were sent out to properties that had, were putting out bins that they weren't paying for. And basically they were told that either they needed to surrender the bin by a certain date or that they would start to be charged for that. So what happens is, properties basically get the three bins. As for the, this year it's $400 to have the three bin system. And then properties that have extra bins pay per bin. So a red bin is worth 200 per year at the moment. And the yellow or a green bin is $100 each. So, yeah, as I said, that, that was quite a extensive, extensive audit was done last year. And then it's quite a controlled process for getting extra bins and.
How's control? Is it numbered on bins, with a label, with a sticker or? And we know.
Yeah, sorry, I can answer that one. So my neighbour's got extra bins and there is a sticker that actually says this is an authorised extra bin. And those that don't, like, you know, I've known people that just don't get the bins empty for the same reason. Potentially, yeah, we'll see. Violia will, has not emptied certain people's bins that I know of because they didn't have the sticker, absolutely. All right, councillor.
Any further questions? In that case, we have a report before us. Would somebody care to move the recommendation that we receive a note, the monthly budget report, moved councillor Border, seconded councillor Klobbika? I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. 14.2.2 The Draft 2024/25 Annual Business Plan and Budget. Do we have any questions of either the CEO or our finance manager? Deputy Mayor Pond?
On page 47, regarding the toilets block upgrades. It's got there the third block that you're looking at is Wilson Park. Just wondering how we came to that one as the third block needing upgraded, as Civic Parks is very rundown. We have quite a few events there. And, yeah, I just thought that one might more, be more of a priority.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that in the first question. Yeah, I think we will need to come back and work through the Civic Park one because at some point there was discussion around potentially moving the site to near the dog park. And then the priorities sort of changed and so Forshaw and Wetlands became the number one and two priority. So it's possible that we need to work out whether Civic or Wet, or Wilson is the next one. And it might be that one, Wilson needs to push out one further a year. So we've sort of put that based on the schedule. But I think Wetland sort of ended up getting swapped in for Civic as a higher priority. And that might have slipped in the programme. So, yeah, I'll take that. I'll notice and we can work out what that might look like.
Councillor Border?
On that exact note, at the listening post, a lady who uses the dog park all the time said that one of the concerns was some members in a really nice group, very good social environment, would have to go home to use the toilets because there were none in the confines of the dog park. So I just wanted to plant that seed that it might be something that's already in the mix, but if it wasn't, I think it would be good that it was in the mix in those considerations that, yeah, you're making.
Thank you, councillor. There are no further questions or comments. We have a recommendation that endorses the content of the Draft 24/25 Annual Business Plan and Budget. Assume there are no further changes. And that we release the Draft Annual Business Plan and Budget, any adjustment, oh, right, yes. So we have the two motions there. Councillor Border, are you moving? Do I have a second, please? Councillor Border moved, councillor Campbell seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. 14.2.3 Dog and Cat Registration Fees. We have the report, we'll take it as read. Is there any? We have the report, we'll take it as read. Does anybody have any questions? Which I'll hand over to the CEO and he can then hand over to somebody else. Uh, councillor Knox?
On page one, two, four, there is discussion of replacement dog discs. I don't think we issue dog discs anymore. It's happened for a few years now.
Yeah, there is a charge for replacement ones. So discs, discs are for life now. Um, but if you lose it, you can get replacement ones and there's a fee.
So they're, they're actually, are actually discs.
Yep, discs are issued on initial registration and they were done when we moved over to Daco. The online, um, a lifetime disc was issued at that time and that was the last time unless you register a new dog or you.
Learn something every day.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Mayor Pond?
Just on that, I've got two family members that have registered new dogs online and have never received a disc.
That gets sent, that doesn't come from council, it comes directly from Daco.
Yep.
So they might, we might need to do an inquiry to look at what's happened there because. I, I don't live in this council, I live in this, we've registered a dog and got our disc like about three days later. So interesting.
I just presumed the, the system had changed because yeah, they're both done online recently in the last couple of years and they've never received anything.
Yeah.
Lovely.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, would somebody care to move the recommendation? Move councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against? Carried. Thank you. Fourteen point three, city growth, we have no reports. Fourteen point four, city infrastructure, no reports. Item fifteen. Information decision reports, fifteen point one, uh fifteen point one point one, the mess list of engagements. Just two other comments I would like. To make, although we have been discussing it in the meantime. But I must say the councillors' listening post, perhaps because it was the first ever like that. Uh, certainly in the early part of the day, kept everybody that was on there quite busy. So I thank everybody who was able to. Be part of it and certainly came out with a lot of comments, a lot of requests. Uh, as I have circulated to everyone, uh, I have requested that all directors through the CEO. Refer it to all their managers as well to make sure that we address everything. And in due course, when the more complex matters are finalised, we'll certainly report back the outcomes of that. But certainly as a first up, uh, we've already identified both myself and members. Uh, plus the comms team as well, some uh changes we can add. Minor things to just make it stand out in future. So I half suspect with the success there for a first up at least. Whether I become a bit blasé if it's everywhere, but I do see the potential at future appropriate events, but no, quite successful. And the other one was the work that through the Clontarf Academy students. From the secondary college, yes, councillors, our commerce team have got some media up about it. But that is going to be exceptionally good to have indigenous and native gardens being designed in an area that. Has outlived its lifetime there, right alongside the ship. So I met the, the CEO and I met the lads that were there. They were thoroughly enjoying it, very pleased to be involved. I've got to admit. I had not heard of Zancock Knight, so I did my research, very respected, very good organisation. That is assisting, as we've said, they're indigenous owned, managed, controlled business that provides assistance. So congratulate those responsible for getting that funding, but yeah, that's going to be a great project for Clontarf and ourselves. There are no, uh, yes councillor, I said.
Just commenting on your listening post, I think a hand of gratitude's got to go out to. Media and the events team, they did a great job today. The events team run around like blue eyes, they did brilliantly.
Oh, this is at Easter?
Yeah.
Right, yes. Thank you, councillor. Certainly make sure that's passed on. Somebody care to move the recommendation that receives and notes my report, move deputy mayor Pond. Seconded councillor Campbell, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against? Carried. Thank you. Item fifteen point two corporate services, fifteen point two point one, the monthly information report for April. Quite a good collection of information there. Which I thank the authors for certainly providing. Does anybody have any questions to direct to the CEO? Councillor Boarder?
The resident online spend, online has gone down by four point five one percent, which I, I, I feel on the surface is a good thing. Because they're spending it somewhere else except online. How does that get measured? Did I miss in the report where it sort of explains how we measure that?
It's all credit card transactions that occur in the city and they can trace that as to um where you're from and where you're spending it. It, it, it's, the analysis looks to be, it could be a, as a result of the, the. The cost of living as much as anything else. So the cost of living is impacting many people. So they're, they're on, so it's. Not easily to just say it means they're spending it locally rather than, than.
They just not be spending it at all.
Yeah, they might not just be spending it all, that's correct.
Yeah, and I was just interested, that spend tracker thing is pretty powerful tool, incredible.
Yeah.
Big brother's watching.
Hmm.
Councillor Knox?
My comment is about the childcare centre. Can we get some statistics in the report? For how many kids are attending, comparison with the same period last year, for example. Stuff that's meaningful to council so we can tell whether the childcare centre is on the up or whether it's going down. So. I'd like to see that please in the report going forwards.
Thank you councillor. Any further questions? In that case, we have a report before us with a recommendation, would somebody care to move that recommendation? Uh, move councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Knox. Those in favour, against? Carried. Thank you. Item sixteen, notice of motion, we have nil. Seventeen questions on notice. We have nil. Eighteen questions without notice. Sorry.
Item seventeen, we did.
Oh, my apologies. Almost through. Sorry, yes, questions on notice. We do have some answers there from last meeting. Are you happy with those answers just being recorded there councillor?
I'm happy with them just being recorded there. I, I have some, I hate to say it, some doubts as to the veracity of the. Of the information because of the vibes that I'm picking up, uh, that there wasn't really good consultation. Um, and yeah, I'm just not sure if we're a hundred percent accurate. I don't know if anybody else has any comments to make, but they're my thoughts.
Yeah, councillor. Councillor Simpson?
I'm echoing councillor Knox's comments that the comments I've had. It's a consultation, it's not such a work. It was a, it's just happening. Not what, what we want to do, this is what we want to do. Second comment I have, do we have we as a canine club sign a lease for the shed in the area they're using? Because if we build a building, if we have a tenant, I always say that councillor Boarder will tell me. That you normally have a leasing place before you do that, not afterwards. So I'd like to know if we've got a leasing place for them.
Thank you councillor. No further questions on notice. Item eighteen, questions without notice. We have any questions without notice? Councillor. Uh, Deputy Mayor Pond?
First of all, I'd just like to mirror the previous comments. I think the, the consultation process wasn't adequate. And um that's an area we definitely need to up. Questions without notice though, I've had a few from residents. And a couple of them are going to be very easy to answer, I think. Um, laneways. Are they a council's responsibility or the residents?
Through the chair, it's um the council's responsibility. We have contracts in place with Bedford and Corrections. And there's a, there's a third one, another not-for-profit group, isn't there? Um, yeah, um, to help with um cleaning and maintenance of um laneways. Um, like all of our assets, there's lots of them, um, and we can only um obviously work from on a progressive basis. So where residents can. Uh, help out, uh, that, that assistance is gratefully received.
And it would it be appropriate to report that through the My Local app, like weeds and everything else?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Lovely, just so I've got the right information. Um, the next question I had from a resident, do we use Snap Solve app? Apparently we're registered on it.
I'm going to say no.
Snap Solve app?
No.
Does it do?
It's just like My Local Services app?
Yep, no, we don't use it. We use my service and my local services app. Which is consistently used across all councils and supported by the LGA. So the other app that you referred to. Uh, might have had an existence at one point in time, but no, we don't use it.
I had never heard of it either and I actually looked it up. Um, and it's pretty similar to My Local Services. But this resident told me that Waila was registered on it and um it's probably why his reports are not. Going through. So I will report back to him that that is not the appropriate app. Um. Just a quick, um, can we please advertise our hard waste services, uh, My Local. Um, services app and also put out to the public the number for trolleys to be collected. Um, I actually did a post and it's been shared a lot around Waila, but council have a much broader range. Um, to get out there and it's been quite positive. Um, people were not aware of certain numbers to call, especially for the trolleys. We've noticed a couple of areas that were picked up within days. Unfortunately, they are going back though. Um. But it's a, a quite a powerful message to get out to as many residents as we can and hoping that council could follow through with that one. And my last one is regarding um all the rubbish on verges. Um, I know Colin mentioned that he puts his crime tape out. Um, but are we actually doing anything? Are we having those conversations with residents saying? These are services that you can call. Have you called Bedford? And maybe give them a timeline. If this is not moved within three weeks, you're getting a fine. We need to have some consequences.
Um, through the mayor, uh, certainly we do when there is dumping on verges and footpaths and so on, staff do talk with the residents. Um, in the houses that that dumping is at the front of, they do provide information as to where and how that can be collected. And if it's not collected, uh, we do move towards infringement notices. Uh, one of the things that we're doing and, and the administration is meeting next week. Uh, to start looking at a broad. Um, a broad approach from across the organisation and different parts of the organisation around city amenity. Uh, illegal dumping and verges and, and so on is going to be part of that discussion. With the view then to coming to council for and with a workshop on the twenty ninth of April. Around dealing with all of these matters and, and how is it that we can actually improve city amenity? Through multiple different approaches. There's regulatory approaches, of course, that can be taken, but there's also city activation approaches that can be taken. Um, and different sorts of things across the city. This is in alignment with the council's um inclusion in the draft annual business plan and budget. For a hundred thousand dollars additional funds to go towards city amenity. And we want to have a conversation with the council about how those funds will get used. Rather than simply placing them in Colin's budget, for example, for use on, on mowing or, or spraying weeds or whatever. Where is it and what is it that the programs uh that we can develop across the city to actually uplift city amenity? Um, and make good use of those monies and more um as that comes through. So. We are planning, as I said, a workshop with the council on the twenty ninth of April. That will be um. Um, a preliminary workshop will be held with staff on the twenty third, so that that will then feed into the council workshop. In the context of crime tape um around illegal dumping, um, very recently, we. And I have requested the regulatory services team actually do that to place crime, uh, crime tape around illegally dumped waste. And to put information on that illegally dumped waste, that this is a matter which is being investigated. Uh, and they have started to move more proactively in that space. Some of the key with this is to really let the community know that, that we have seen it, we are actually addressing it. And to start actually moving in that direction. Um, so, so baby steps are happening. Um, and we do, as I said, want to have a workshop with the council to collectively work out together what we can do to make it better.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, councillor Knox?
Forna Park. Um, I had a drive out to there about a week ago. The front fence and the entrance way is all gone. You can drive straight in. I would imagine it'd be a wonderful adventure playground for kids in Waila. And I would think there's quite a lot of stuff out there that could be quite unsafe. Maybe even asbestos out there in some of the older buildings. But certainly all the cages and things are there, not maintained, of course. And the Bavarian with the, the brick or stone building, the door to that was open. Um, so I don't know who's inside there, but I just think we need to make the place a bit secure. But the whole front fence is all gone.
Yeah, councillor Knox, um, I've been aware of this for a while now. And I've just slowly watched the place fall apart. I've been out there trying to, you know, stop it as much as I can, repair fences. But once that fence was removed, it was exposed and the vandal's moved in. Kids on motorbikes catch more time. Um, I've spoken to the police, I've spoken to, you know, we've, we've spoken as a leadership group. And at this stage, the intent would be to try to get our demolition budget bigger for next year, to be able to. Start to remove um the, the facilities and clean the place up as best we can. But as soon as I get some money to do so, I'll be throwing. Small um groups out there and my team when they've got time to, to start to slowly clean the place up.
Thank you councillor, yes. No further questions without, oh, sorry councillor Boarder?
That's okay. Um, whether this is a question or not, but I, I just wanted to preface it with um a little bit of context that. I think we have a huge opportunity with the efforts that we've made through the listening post. That the community are being listened to, that we are a council with, with big ears. I used to get teeth when I was younger for my big ears. And finally, it's, it's coming into um, uh, as a big benefit. So I, I don't think we should miss that opportunity. So with the feedback that we received with queries, questions, compliments, complaints. We talked in February, just after we were all elected, that we were going to be bold, that we were going to be transparent. And I think this is a huge opportunity to do that because there's really nothing to hide, that it's all good. And so I think the idea that we have listened to the community at the Easter markets, that we've got a big, beautiful list that's been wonderfully compiled by the deputy mayor and the mayor. And we are taking action on it through whatever channels we are taking action on it. But just to be able to show that back to the community, certainly I'm interested in it to see how these things flow through and where their action and how their action and what the follow-up is. And I think showing that to the community as openly as we possibly can is, is a very good step towards building more and more trust with the community. So I don't know whether this goes under a motion or a question, but to be able to have that accessible to the public, a list of what was requested, a list of the actions taken. Um, yeah, if I could be guided as to where best to place that in the motion or question section, that would be good.
Um, we are absolutely compiling detailed responses to each of the matters that uh were raised at the listening post. We have progressed quite some way down the path in terms of addressing many of those matters that were raised and. Uh, we are very happy to ensure that that information is transparent in multiple different ways. For example, what we can do is listed on the agenda for the May council meeting, so that it is a report that goes to the May council meeting. Uh, with each of the details as to progress against addressing them, closing some of them out or, or providing information as to what are the plans that are going, uh, going through. Um, following that council meeting or even beforehand, we can actually put a post up on, on Facebook. Um, and keep that information flowing through. Um, I, it is an important communication piece. Um, very happy, uh, I think perhaps for a motion without notice at tonight's council meeting. Advising or, or calling for the responses to the matters raised at the listening post. Uh, to be reported back to the next uh council meeting, but also for that information to be reported out to the community at large. uh, to be reported back to the next, uh, council meeting, but also for that information to be reported out to the community at large. Um, so I think a, a motion without notice, so that then it's actually a part of the record of this council meeting, which is also a communication tool out into the community.
That's wonderful. And I just think as simple as possible, what you said and what we've done post, and then obviously in the official minutes with, with more detail. But thank you, that's good.
Councillor Simpson?
I get asked with some regularity, and no doubt my fellow councillors do as well. What are we doing back Qantas and the cancelled flight and the expensive flights and what have you? We do say the CEO and the mayor meet with regular occurrence to the, to Qantas management. But we don't seem to put on our website or Facebook page that we've done a meeting or had a meeting, and, and subjects being investigated or whatever. So I'd like to think that we share some information with the public every now and again on that issue.
Uh, through the mayor, thank you for the question. Um, so the first part was what are we doing? Um, we have had a number of conversations, um, um, with Qantas. Yep. So my response was, um, we have had regular meetings so far. The information that we've obtained through those meetings is probably not really in a form that, um, is able to be disseminated to the community other than we're meeting with Qantas. I.e. there is no outcomes from those discussions, other than the fact that we're raising the community concerns with Qantas about, um, the, the flights at times. Um, what we have, um, arranged is, um, Alan Somerville, uh, from, uh, Qantas. He's the regional manager for Northern Territory and South Australia Marketing and Something. I'm not sure the, the full title. Um, Alan will be attending the WTF, uh, breakfast on Thursday morning. Uh, so a number of you may have the opportunity to have a chat with, um, Alan over the breakfast. Immediately following the breakfast, um, we'll take the opportunity to, uh, have a, an informal conversation with Alan. So any councillors who are coming to the breakfast, um, will give you confirmation as to where we'll, we'll meet up, um, or have a chat with Alan following that. Um, we have, um, wa- um, asked Alan to specifically, um, provide some information through to council about both the, um, issue of delayed or cancelled flights. Um, my view is that there have been relatively fewer in recent times than there was, uh, some time ago. Um, Qantas have improved their, um, South Australian regional capacity with an additional plane, um, servicing South Australia. So we know that, um, the number of, um, delays or cancellations has reduced in more recent times. Um, and in relation to, uh, the pricing, um, we have received some, um, information about, uh, how Qantas does their pricing, um, but we've asked Alan to provide some more, uh, facts and figures to help explain, how the pricing works. And essentially, basically, as more and more, um, seats get sold, uh, progressively, the price of the seats, um, increases. Um, what Qantas seeks to do is not sell out all of their tickets, say, a month in advance, uh, because someone wanting to get on a plane, looking in a month's time and seeing that they can't get a, a, um, a flight, because the, the plane is completely booked out, because all of the seats have been sold at a cheap price, doesn't serve those customers, nor Qantas particularly well. And, um, invariably, there is, um, some swings and roundabouts. Some of the cheaper flights, if, um, just putting it in simple terms, if the whole plane was full of passengers purchasing cheaper flights, um, um, the, it would probably cost Qantas to actually, um, bring that plane into Wayala. So where there is, um, a higher price, that enables Qantas to make, um, some money on the route. So it is complicated, but if you think about things like hotel bookings, if you, um, try to book, um, a hotel room tomorrow night in a, um, um, a, a particular location that's busy, you know you'll be paying an absolute premium. The same applies for flights. If you book the day before and you're booking on a flight that's already heavily booked, you're gonna be paying, uh, much more than what you would pay if you paid, if you booked that flight two weeks or three weeks earlier, um, when the, there's less, or there's more seats still to be booked. So it is a bit of a complicated message to how do we share that with the community. But, um, the key thing, sorry, back to councillor Simpson, um, take the opportunity to have a chat with Alan informally on Thursday. Um, and we will look at how we, um, try to get some of that messaging out to the community, to let them know that we are in active conversation with Qantas, trying to, um, ensure that, um, um, they're, they're responding to some of those community, um, concerns.
If I could just follow up on that councillor, yeah, some of the questions, we've had previous discussions about this between just, uh, the CEO and myself. I will be wanting from, uh, Alan, actual figures about cancellations, delays and the likes. Because all I hear from, with respect to yourself and other community members, is this bland statement. All these cancellations, all these delays, nobody yet has been able to come up with any data. So I want the data, I've already discussed this with the CEO. I want him to give us data about percentages, numbers. Is it rife? Have they solved most of their problems? I, I've discussed this with the CEO, I struggle to come to grips with the way airlines do their pricing. I want Alan to explain to you and the community how it works, that I can't explain it other than, the more that go on the plane. At the last minute, you're paying more. Uh, they will argue that if you look at their schedule, the majority of their flights are a relatively standard cost. So I certainly welcome as many members as possible that are available after the breakfast to, uh, continue. It will be an informal conversation. It's not as if he will be briefing council, because that puts him at a different level, of how he has to speak. But hopefully we can get some more accurate information and express your views as well. Anything more on that councillor?
No, thank you.
Okay. Oh, of course. But we certainly, we certainly get the vibes.
Thank you.
Councillor Border?
Um, thank you, mayor and mayor and CEO. I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I hear what you're saying councillor Simpson. And jump in if I'm misunderstanding this, because what I feel, and I'm not gonna speak on anyone else's behalf except my own here, is that there are things that are complicated, but if the community don't hear anything, they don't think anything is happening. So I fully believe what you're saying. It's a complicated issue, and there are many complicated issues, and there are things that the community have no patience for. They don't think to the depth that we are considering things. And so whether it's councillor Simpson's point or my point, whether this is a question or emotion, it does flow into what I'm talking about with the Easter market. It's at, at every opportunity, and this is a golden one with Easter market, is to show the community what our values are, that we are, we are on top of these things. Or maybe we're not on top of it, but we're telling you. We're not waiting for the, for the abyss or the vacuum to be filled up by, the voices we've all known and, and hear all the time, that we then have to react to, um, which takes time anyway. I'd rather suggest let's put that time in upfront and make a deposit rather than a withdrawal. And, and so look, here's, here's what we're doing, and here's the, the next two weeks' worth of action that we're taking. Not to be overly laborious, but to really show the community, we are aware of these things. Because then I think there, there's a quiet majority that will start looking to us as a source of information than elsewhere. And I think that's a huge step in, in rebuilding and continuing to build trust with the community.
Thanks councillor. Right, moving on then, item nineteen, motions without notice. Councillor Border?
Thank you very much Cathy. Can we read through that one there about the Easter market listening post? And then, do I just, can I just read that and? Do we need to be specific, um, about the further communicated to the community as to how that will be? Like in an easily digestible format that's without all the detail that would be in the report, or in the minutes which we know not everyone's gonna read? But finding a way to communicate it in a bite-sized chunk to, to really get bang for our buck, because the work's gonna go into the detailed report. Does it need to be in this motion that it will be communicated to the community in a way that's, I don't know if the word's easily digestible, uh, appropriate?
If I can make a comment there, I think what's been said tonight would definitely be picked up. And I would certainly be oversighting how we communicate.
Yeah.
So point is well and truly taken.
Wonderful. In that case, I'm happy to move that motion up there.
All right, councillor, Deputy Mayor Pond, are you seconding?
Absolutely, thank you.
We have a motion. There's no further comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Yes, carried. Thank you. Have any further notices or motions, Deputy Mayor Pond?
Yes, I would like to put forward a motion that council scribe a support letter, um, to Eddie Hughes and the state government, supporting Plaza Youth, in restate, reinstating the Safer Communities Fund. In reinstating the Safer Communities Fund. And I'll speak to that in a minute if that is accepted. Have I got the wording right?
Should that, indicate who we are supporting?
Plaza Youth.
Plaza Youth. But should it not be perhaps a bit more direct requesting?
Absolutely.
Statement?
Yep. Happy to take advice.
Well, be guided by the CEO, but to me that was too, it's missing, that we're supporting, who we're supporting. We're not supporting our member, we're supporting the group to ask our member to take this up.
Absolutely. We're asking our member to advocate for Plaza Youth.
Yeah.
In restating, reinstating that.
So the support, the support letter is to, to, for the council to scribe a support letter for Park Plaza Youth Centre, to Eddie Hughes. So the council is supporting Plaza Youth Centre in approaching Eddie Hughes to get funding.
Requesting or a word similar instead of just supporting it.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's a bit more.
Be guided by the CEO.
Demanding.
Yeah. I've just, this is my ignorance in advance, but this particular fund I'm not familiar with. Um, in the absence of knowing about the fund, I'm a little bit concerned about asking for funding from a fund that may not actually be supported by the state government anymore. I don't know if it's a current fund.
It is a current fund, um, that has been discontinued here in Wayala. Um, a letter was sent to you last week. Um, from Plaza Youth through myself, and I've actually forwarded on to the other elected members, which is probably what's caused a little bit of confusion.
So just clarifying, so this fund is a grant-based, application-based fund. So when you say that it's been suspended or, or it's no longer available for Wayala, how is Wayala different from any other locality across the state that can apply for this funding?
It needs support from our local member to be reinstated here in our city. Um.
So, so just for clarification wording, it's not a matter of being reinstated. It's that an application receives favorable response, in terms of securing future grant funding for programs provided by Plaza Youth. Was it's by application?
So I'll explain it a little bit and then you can work out the wording. So for years now, we've actually had this bucket of money for a safer communities project. And it mainly goes around youth justice and keeping our young people safe. That, um, it's not a grant, it's, um, it is a fund. And Wayala will no longer be receiving that fund very soon, which means that, support from Plaza Youth and their staff will be cut down to half. There will be so many services that we will not be able to provide. Um, we're already having a lot of youth justice issues now. Uh, and it means the staff will go back to part-time. And there are so many services for our young people that will not be covered anymore.
Through, through the, the, um, through the chair, can I suggest that we don't limit this request for support to one fund only, in the absence of knowing what the availability of the fund is? Because we may be saying we want to apply to a particular funds, which we may not be able to access for some time. I think if we broaden the, um, recommend or suggestion is that we broaden, um, the resolution that we seek, um, uh, support from our local state member as well as the state governments, for the provision of funding to support early intervention or whatever words you wanna put in there. So we're not limiting ourselves to one fund only, um, because I'm just conscious that I'm not familiar with, how and when that fund will become available, and I'd hate to be waiting for twelve or fourteen months or eighteen months for the next, um, bucket of money to become available. Unless someone else has Googled quicker than I can.
And, uh, just our grant or the.
Yeah, this round six ends on thirtieth of April and there's no round seven available.
Yeah, so round, round six has, has concluded. I'm just wondering whether or not an alternative resolution to this might be, that investigation be undertaken into the availability of funding for Plaza Youth, and that council seeks the support from Eddie Hughes and the state government, uh, to ensure sufficient funding for Plaza Youth. So broaden it, don't, don't tie it, to the, um, Safer Communities Fund.
Lovely, thank you very much. That sounds a lot better.
Can I ask a question of Tammy, of Deputy Mayor Pond? Can I, can I ask a quick question? How, how urgent is this need?
As Grant said, um, at the end of June, that.
So fifteen days.
There you go. Um, once that funding is gone, the staff have to cut back to half-time. The mad bus where they pick children up in the middle of the night and take them home will be discontinued. Um.
What does mad stand for?
Yeah, I can't agree with that, sorry. Um.
I know, I know there's an acronym there.
But the, the letter that I sent around to everybody, and I'm quite happy to share that with staff as well. Um, it outlines the amount of services that we will lose within the community. And, um, one in particular around our youth justice, um, issue that we're having at the moment. We've got a, as one particular group of kids that are running amok all over the place, causing assaults. Plaza Youth are the first people that everybody call to come and help sort out that situation. If those staff are not available, um, the problem will definitely escalate. And just as a side note, Plaza Youth have a community meeting, um, Friday, eleven o'clock. Um, they're calling in all the parents of these children, we're calling in services, um, we're calling in coles. Everyone who's having an issue to put everything on the table, uh, Safe Pole will be in attendance. Um, we're really trying to stamp out their behaviour and work as a team. But if we're losing half of what Plaza Youth can give us now, um, the situation is just gonna escalate.
Thank you for that clarification. And I guess the reason I ask is with vested interest is to bulk up that investigation, if it can be that urgent investigation, because as I understand it, in fifteen or sixteen days, the services that we currently are already not enough, will be halved again, which we could assume would then exacerbate the existing issues and make things even worse. Okay, can I, can I suggest we use that word urgent?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for everyone's help.
No, that's federal.
Can I, can I just also clarify, just Googling on the fly here? This, the fund that you just referred to is actual federal government funding.
I'm only going with the information that Joe has sent us.
Yeah.
And, um, that referred to state government.
This is where I think if we don't link it to any, any fund at all.
But we also referred previously to state government funding.
Yeah.
Where it could actually potentially.
Where it could actually potentially be federal government funding. So did you want to drop state and federal out and just put reference to government?
Government, yes.
Government support.
Yep. Yes, please. Thank you very much, everyone, for your support and help, because I didn't have the wording right. My apologies.
I have. Um we really need to also include Rowan Ramsay in that as well. If we're talking federal federal funding, we need to talk to him. And if we're going for my, if we're going for a broader sense of funding in any way, we should include Rowan Ramsay.
And to that point, if I may, through the mayor, um I would actually reference state and federal government. So we say that we're actually pursuing funding from both levels through our appropriate um members.
Very possible, very possible. Sorry. Um I think Joe sent it out to everyone Thursday or Friday.
I'll sec, I'll second it. If we're finished, if it's, if the wording is good.
I'm very happy with that, thank you.
Good work, team.
That sounds precise.
Right, members, with the time now back at seven o'clock, we will reconvene. Would somebody please care to move? And second that we reconvene, uh move count, now I've got a whole heap here, so I'll take them in order.
Good.
Move councillor Simpson, second a deputy mayor Pond, put the motion, those in favour, that we reconvene. Thank you. Now can I call on uh somebody to move that we go into confidence for the two confidential items? Move councillor Knox, second of councillor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against Kerry. Thank you.